Welcome everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Fitzwater, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to get together, to discuss the business of Jeff City and with our community leaders. We appreciate the opportunity and appreciate all that you do for us. We look around and we see a lot of pink in the room tonight representing our thoughts and prayers for those that are both going through difficult situations. I know personally, anyone in this room has not been affected by cancer, either themselves or family members, and we just pray that you can be with those that suffer from it, those that have suffered, and the families that are caregivers. Thank you for all that you do, and we thank you for public safety, our fire, police, and military scattered around the world, and we pray your safety on them. We appreciate that. Events over the weekend, one more opportunity to celebrate what they do for our city and our community. Praying your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with honor, indivisible, in the liberty and justice of God.
I'll now call to order the Monday, October 21st, 2019, City Council meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Praether.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
All right, item three, is there a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We are honored this evening to make a special presentation of a plaque and city key to Terry Stevenson, and Terry is with us this evening along with her husband, and we would like to invite you to the podium so we can celebrate your retiring. So Terry is a city purchasing agent retiring with 37 years of service, and I have with me tonight a special plaque with the key to the city, and it reads, "Terry Stevenson, Purchasing Agent, in recognition of your leadership, commitment, and dedication to serve the people of the City of Jefferson for 37 years, December 1981 to October of 2019, on behalf of the City Council and Mayor." And we want to take a moment and recognize all your years of service. We've been very fortunate to have you in the Finance Department and in purchasing. I feel like I go way back with you. I knew you well before I was ever involved in city government, and I've enjoyed working alongside you and all that you've done here for the city. So if you'd like to say a few words, we would welcome that.
I think the only thing that I would have to say is that you don't stay in a position this long if you don't enjoy the work and the people you work with. Thank you all.
And also, take support of family. Anybody you would like to introduce?
Yes. My husband Joel.
Thank you for being here, and thank you, and congratulations. And I'd like to invite Margie up, and your husband as well, and we'll get a picture here as we present this plaque with the City Council tonight. So we have with us Olivia Henin and her mom, and we'd love to have you all come up and tell us about some upcoming events that you have and what this great cause is about. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Henin, and I'm a senior Elias Catholic and the president and founder of Little Box of Sunshine. On January 2nd, 2009, my friend Margaret Romf was injured in a car accident. As some of you may know, Margaret passed away in May. Early in the summer of 2016, I was inspired to start my own charity when Margaret was in the hospital for 67 days. I thought I could raise some money for a children's charity and call it a day. I had just graduated eighth grade at Immaculate Conception School in Jefferson City. While visiting Margaret, I saw that other children did not have the loving and supportive family that Margaret has. Some children were dropped off and left alone for several days or even weeks until it was time for them to be brought home. Walking through the picky at Women's and Children's, I realized I needed to do something more than raise money. In June 2016, that something became Little Box of Sunshine. Little Box of Sunshine is a 501(c)(3) charity based here in Jefferson City. Our mission is to brighten the days of children in hospitals. We do this by sending them boxes full of goodies. A box from Little Box of Sunshine includes items like pillowcases, coloring books, crayons, stress balls, and other miscellaneous toys to keep kids entertained during their long hospital stays. Our first box delivery was made to St. Louis in the winter of 2016. After that, it was clear that Little Box of Sunshine was here to stay. Since then, we have delivered over 1,500 boxes in 17 states. Little Box of Sunshine holds many fundraisers and community outreach events throughout the year. On November 6th, 2019, we will host our second annual Purses for a Purpose event at Capital Bluffs Event Center in Jefferson City. Purses for a Purpose is a silent and live auction of all different kinds of handbags, purses, and wristlets. Many community individuals and businesses help make this event a success. I brought ticket order forms with me this evening if you are interested in being a part of our event this year. As much as I want sick children to know I care, I really want them to know that they have an entire group of kids their age that are thinking about them and praying for them. Even though a normal kid might not know what it's like to be in a hospital for an extended period of time, most kids do know what it is like to not feel well. I've tried to encourage other people my age and younger to get involved. To reach out to more young people, we have added two high school students to our Board of Directors. I am so proud of how these new additions have stepped up to the plate and given themselves wholeheartedly to the mission of Little Box of Sunshine. Although we can't do it all, these students and I are trying to take many of the activities and responsibilities of the charity into our own hands rather than the hands of the adults on our board. This truly makes each Little Box of Sunshine to a kid from a kid. I have many goals for Little Box of Sunshine. The first and most important is to make kids smile and know they aren't alone, that someone is cheering for them, and that someone cares. I also hope to show other children that aren't sick that they too can make a difference. I often tell kids that if they make one person smile, that's making a difference. I hope that through my hard work, I can also inspire other people to help. There's no such thing as too many volunteers or too much fundraising. There are always more kids suffering that we can make smile.
Well, that is such a noble mission that you've had, and for you to be in high school and start a nonprofit is just really cool. We're very proud of you for what you've done, and this really carries on the memory of Margaret, and that she's had such an influence that now you're able to help so many other kids that are in the hospital and really need that and brighten their day. So very proud of you, and yes, I would like one of those sheets that has information about your November 6th event, and I'm sure other council members would like those as well, so if you want to pass those. Yeah, and maybe if you can get it electronically, Emily can make sure and distribute that as well. And are there any questions of council at this time? And we would love to have you come up, and we'll get a picture so you can share it on your social media and promote your event, and we have your parents with you too if they'd like to come up in the picture too.
We also have another board member.
Oh, and another board member.
Oh, but I'm a junior.
Oh, well, actually, and I didn't even recognize, well, we have Linda Harvey who's on your board, and then we have former Councilman Mike Harvey, so it's always great to have councilmen here as well. So y'all are welcome to come forward, and we'll get a photo.
I'm not pretty in pink. But pink and yellow, I like.
to the Jefferson City Fire Department. Welcome, Roxy and Chief Schofield.
And I'll just really quickly give an introduction to Roxy. She is our local race director and coordinator for the Stephen Stiller Foundation, and also the race director for the Tunnels to Towers 5K. And I'll also ask that firefighter Clint Kimker and firefighter Travis Hinke join us up here. We don't have firefighter Michael Bainbridge, who is the fourth member of our four-person team that ran in this year's race, but I would just mention real quickly that our commitment to tunnels to towers and the 5K is kind of multifaceted. First, it's a commitment to firefighter fitness and overall fire ground performance, and I got to tell you, it's getting harder and harder to keep up with these guys. They are in great shape, and I am not, as much as I used to be, and so it's a challenge for me every year to try to hang with them, and they drag me along with them as we go. But it's also to honor not only Stephen Stiller and his legacy, but also the good work that Tunnels to Towers does here in our community. So I'll hand it over to Roxy.
Thank you, Chief. As Chief Schofield mentioned, I am a volunteer race director for the Stephen Stiller Tunnel to Towers Foundation here in Jefferson City, and we've been here four years now. This year was our fourth event, and our biggest event, the biggest thing we do is in September, we do a 9/11 Memorial 5K where we do invite not only our firefighters, local firefighters, and many of them run in their turnout gear, which is 65 or more pounds of gear, but also a lot of local community members come out and run. I do want to mention a couple of things that the foundation does. It started after 9/11. Stephen was a firefighter that died on 9/11, along with 342 other firefighters, and his legacy is that he was off duty that day, and much like many other firefighters, when he heard the call, he went into action. He couldn't join his squad, they had already left to go to the Twin Towers, so he tried to drive to Lower Manhattan from Brooklyn. He was unable to drive there because the tunnel was already closed, so he got out of his vehicle, put his gear on, 65-plus pounds, and ran through the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel to the Twin Towers where he did perish that day. And his family started this foundation as a legacy to him, not only Stephen, but all of the firefighters and law enforcement officers that died that day, and the civilians. I just recently participated in the event in New York City. They have one 5K every year, and over 30,000 people run in that event, and it is the most awesome thing. I would love it for some of the Jeff City Fire Department to get to go sometime because it is just the most awesome event. What the foundation does is, when we started, was to build smart homes for veterans that have given huge sacrifices to our country. And in many cases, these veterans are coming home, they've lost multiple limbs, they may be paralyzed. Many of you know Tyler Huffman, who lives here in Jefferson City. His home was one of the first smart homes that the Stephen Stiller Tunnel to Towers Foundation and Gary Sinise went together to build, along with many city members and members of the community as well. Since then, over 85 as of September 1st, and I think that number's probably a little bit higher, smart homes have been dedicated and given mortgage-free to our veterans that have served our country. In addition to that, as I know many of you know, a lot of first responders, a lot of law enforcement officers are killed in the line of duty these days, and it's a thankless job. Oftentimes for them, they're called out, they left their family that morning, that evening, to go on duty, and they don't come home. And so one of the things that the foundation has done is begun paying off mortgages for families where there are small children left when one of the parents has been killed in the line of duty. And the third program, which we started about a year ago, is to provide mortgage-free homes for Gold Star families. And many of you may know, but in case you don't know what a Gold Star family is, that's a family where one member, one of the parents, has been killed in action, not always overseas, but generally overseas. They're a member of our armed forces, they were killed in action, and their family is given, once again, a mortgage-free home where their mortgage is paid off, so that remaining family member doesn't have to worry about keeping a roof over their children's heads. So that, in a nutshell, is what our foundation does. Luckily, we haven't had to do a lot in Jefferson City. The money we raise here does go into the National Foundation, but definitely if we ever needed to, I would want to be notified, and I do watch for things that happen in our state where we can reach out and maybe try to help a family.
Roxy, we appreciate all the work that you do with this foundation, and we're very proud to have that here, and it does just amazing work for families, and appreciate all those that serve and how important that is to our communities. Does council have any questions at this time? Well, and we also, as we know, we have a very special trophy behind you, and this is really impressive, so that day, to watch all the firefighters from across the state that were here to run in the Tunnel to Towers event, it was a beautiful day, and started in the downtown at the Governor's Garden, and went around, and to see all of you dressed in your full gear and out there just running and so dedicated. But I know that we were blessed to have this trophy last year, I believe that was the first time that it was available.
No, this is the third year that Jeff City Fire Department, they did win it the first year, the second year gave it up, and have had it the third and fourth year now.
Wow, well, that is impressive. So this is for the fastest firehouse, is that correct?
Fastest firehouse. Their time was 40 minutes, 20 seconds, and I know, I mean, I am an older woman, but I know I couldn't do a 5K, especially the hills we have in Jeff City, in 40 minutes. So I mean, it was awesome to watch them come across the finish line. I was going to bring some pictures and didn't get that done, but if you want to look at our Facebook page, it's T2TJeffCity, and you'll see photos of the team coming across the finish line, along with the other teams. There were, I think we had about four teams this year.
That ran in full gear.
That ran in full gear.
Wow. Well, we are very proud, so thank you all for doing so well in this, and congratulations, and thanks for bringing the trophy back home for the third time. So we would love to have you come forward, and we'll take a picture with council. Thank you. check presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Also tonight, I'll ask Brent Haas, our local operations director with Missouri American Water, to join me, and I believe he has a presentation to make, so I'll hand it over to him.
Welcome. So before we do our check presentation, which Chief will talk about, I was just going to give a brief update to council on a couple of big projects that we have going on currently. So as you know, we are building a new clear well on the grounds at 906 West High Street. That project, in principle, will get underway in November, and will be under construction until November of 2020 when we expect to complete it. It's a $9.2 million clear well, and it's a million gallons of storage, and the structure that it's replacing, the original structure, was built in 1888. It was modified in 1927, but after 130 years, we thought it was time to make an upgrade. So you'll see a lot going on. If you see the Goodwin trailers, they are the lead contractor on the job, but we are partnering with quite a few other local vendors and suppliers as well, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Before I move to the service center, do you have any questions about the new clear well? Okay. The new service center, as many of you know, is just over a $4 million project, and we expect that to be completed in May of 2020. Grading has taken place already, and they're starting to prepare where the parking is going to be in final grade. The materials for that building have been ordered and should be delivered in November, and again, we expect to be moving in in May, so hopefully we stay on schedule with that. On both projects, we are very proud of the local contractors that we partnered with, including but not to forget anyone, Stark Construction, Central Missouri Professional Services, Butzer, Rehagan, and Stokes Electric. I'd be happy to answer any questions on either project.
Any questions? We congratulate you on your groundbreaking.
Thank you.
That's very exciting, and Missouri American has always continued to reinvest in our community, and we're very happy for that. And I think it's also perfect that you happen to be neighbors with the fire station, and I think that it's going to be a perfect match and a great location for your new building.
Absolutely.
And I would add that it's not the first time that we've partnered with them in that location, with the water tower that was constructed there when we built Fire Station Number Three just slightly before. So we have a very special relationship with the water company. We rely on them to supply us our ammunition that we need to fight fires, and so we're really excited to see that service station come in as well.
Absolutely.
Well, congratulations, and we'd love to hear about this check presentation.
One more picture?
Wow, that's awesome. Well, thank you for your generosity, and we'll get a...
And I'll just mention real briefly, we apply every year for the, Missouri American Water opens up a grant process for all fire departments in their service area, and so it's a competitive process, and we apply, and typically we try to keep it along the themes of water for us and water supply, and this year, this money is going to be going towards flow meters in our attack lines, so we can meter exactly what we're flowing through different various nozzles and appliances and hoses. So it helps us in calculating that and making sure that we have the appropriate amount of flow to fight fires, so.
Well, that is great. So we have a check for $1,200 from Missouri American Water to the Jefferson City Fire Department, so thank you for your generosity in recognizing us for these projects, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'd love to get a picture. We are going to recognize Buckle Up Phone Down Day, which is one of my favorite days. So that is coming up here next week, and I want to welcome you, and I'm going to start by reading and sharing this proclamation. Whereas the Missouri Department of Transportation and the Missouri Coalition for Roadway Safety are challenging you and those you know at home, work, school, and community to buckle up and put your phone down, and whereas the challenge is simple, when you get into any vehicle, buckle up your safety belt. If you're a driver, put the cell phone down, turn it off if you have to, no texting and no talking unless hands-free. And whereas in 2018, six out of 10 vehicle occupants killed in Missouri traffic crashes were unbuckled, and over the last four years, crashes involving cell phones have increased by 35%. And whereas, all week long, employees and safety partners will be making special efforts to reach out to businesses and individuals alike. By buckling up and putting your phone down, even for one day, you will be doing your part to make Missouri roads safer. Let's save lives and turn this day into a week, a month, and eventually every trip, every time. The simple task of buckling everyone in the vehicle and choosing not to use your phone while driving can help save your life, the lives of your passengers, and occupants of other vehicles. So whereas, Mayor Turgeon encourages everyone to hashtag Buckle Up Phone Down every day and hashtag Arrive Alive BUPD, No Mo Texting, and whereas, it's time to join the movement and stand up and be counted. Take the challenge at modot.org/buckleupphonedown. So therefore, I declare that Tuesday, October 29th, is officially Buckle Up Phone Down Day in the City of Jefferson, and encourage everyone to participate, not just October 29th, but every day. So this has become an annual tradition, Buckle Up Phone Down Day, and we appreciate MODOT and your efforts every year, and Missouri is now one of only two states in the nation without an all-driver texting ban, and if that doesn't make you afraid to be out on the roadways thinking that that's not a law, that's a little bit concerning and scary at the same time. So it really is in our hands to make sure that we do every effort that we can, because we don't have the law behind us in Missouri unless you're under 21. So with that being said, I would like to turn it over to Nicole Hood, and also I want to take a moment and welcome Michelle Watkins, who is taking over David Sylvester's position, and we all know David, and so we're really, really excited and happy to welcome you to Jefferson City. So if you want to tell us a little about yourself, we're happy to welcome you tonight.
Sure, I was just going to say, very well said with the proclamation, and we truly do appreciate everything you do, Mayor Turgeon, to be an advocate for highway safety and for helping us raise the awareness. Buckle Up Phone Down Day, we want to turn that simple day into a lifetime habit of changes. So thank you so much for everything you do. We will have a distracted driving roundtable in the City of Columbia at the University. The National Transportation Safety Board is actually hosting that meeting, and Mayor Turgeon is on the panel, which we very much appreciate as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to that. And welcome, Michelle.
Thank you, I appreciate the warm welcome. Again, I'm Michelle Watkins, taking over the role for Dave Sylvester. Prior to taking on the role of Central District District Engineer, I was Transportation Planning Director with MODOT, and in that role, I got a really strong appreciation for the importance of the local partnering and transportation decision-making. When we develop and maintain and operate that system, it's important that we hit that regional perspective, so that as we do that, we aren't just meeting statewide goals, but regional goals also, and you all have been very strong partners in that. So thank you for that, and thank you for support for this initiative, it's really important, and for modeling the way.
Great, well, we're very glad to have you in that position, and welcome to Jefferson City, and I know that we work very closely with Dave, so it's nice now to have a face with the name so that all of our council... the name, so that all of our council and the community can get to know who you are in that role. And this Buckle Up Phone Down is something that... I recently went to Kentucky in April to a seminar, and while I was there, there were people nationwide that were at this conference, and some of them had not even... had not heard of Buckle Up Phone Down, because that was kind of a MODOT-started initiative. And after we talked about it, and they saw presentations and videos and all of the PR that goes along with it, they really were enthused and asked, like, wow, how... you know, where do you see... where did you get that? How did you do that? So it was very cool that Missouri, even though we don't have the law necessarily on our side, that Missouri has really been taking the lead in this effort. So very proud about that. Does council have any... anything to add or any comments or questions? All right. Well, we will take a picture with the Buckle Up Phone Down Day, and of course, we all know what we're going to do. Buckle up, phone down with our... we'll do the hand signal. There you go.
While we're all up, we're going to do our pink picture. So if there's anyone in the crowd that has pink, and Matt will take the picture, since he does not have pink. So anyone out there with pink on, come on up, and we're going to take this picture. Thank you.
All right. Item five, we have public hearings. Item 5A, Bill Number 201958.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana testing in transportation facilities.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was a staff-initiated request that was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission in September. It was introduced last council meeting, October 7th, and due to a technical error on city staff's side, we did not get the public notice out for the hearing. So we will have a hearing tonight, but then also have a hearing November 4th. It has been advertised correctly, and the matter can be taken up by the council then. But I will go through the bill right now. Currently, medical marijuana testing in transportation facilities are permitted in the M1 and the M2 zoning districts, which is light industrial and general industrial. The delivery and dispatch services for medical and other uses is permitted in C2 also, as well as industrial, medical, and research testing facilities. So to align the medical marijuana testing and transportation facilities, staff thought it would be appropriate to include those in the C2 zoning also. The city Planning and Zoning Commission did debate the matter, and they voted 5 to 1 to move this forward to the city council for consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions with that.
Any questions? At this time...
May I also add, I'm sorry, we also have a map here, if you'd like to know where those C2 districts are in the red. There is a gray buffer that kind of covers up some of them. It would not be permitted in that area. And then also, the pink is the M1 and M2, where both those uses are permitted right now.
Okay, thank you. This time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on Bill 201958? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion, and we will have a public hearing at the next city council meeting. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to postpone Bill 201958. Councilman Graham.
As the sponsor of the bill, I should postpone Bill 2019-058.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Item six, we have no appointments by the mayor. Item seven, no presentations. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. Are there any committee announcements this evening of upcoming meetings? And you can see a full meeting schedule at JeffersonCityMo.gov and our meeting agendas. And I will call on Councilwoman Laura Ward to make announcement.
Tomorrow evening, October 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 at The Link. Our Jefferson City Human Relations Commission is having their first speaker series event about disability awareness, and they will also have an interactive panel there for the crowd.
Great. So that's open to the public?
Yes, open to the public.
And it's not a ticketed event? People can just show up?
Six o'clock at The Link.
Wonderful. Thank you for the work of the Human Relations Commission. And Mr. Sanders has an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As everybody is probably aware, we are still working on our public involvement process for the beginning of the comprehensive plan development. We have one more public involvement activity besides our survey, which is available on our city homepage. This Thursday, across the hall, the Boone Bancroft Room, between 3:00 and 7:00, we'll have an open house-style land use envisioning mapping exercise. So it's kind of interactive with staff. So I'd like to invite everybody that even has or has not participated or filled out the survey to come join us Thursday, 3:00 to 7:00. Just drop in anytime you want to. We'd appreciate seeing them.
Great, thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
Well, I got volunteered for a function that'll occur on the 26th.
Oh, you did?
For Council of Drug-Free Youth, thinking I was going to rappel off of Carrie's Hallmark, which is one story. Instead, it appears it's the Jefferson State Office Building, or the... yeah, Jefferson Building, which is a few feet higher. I don't like heights as much as I used to, but this is a good cause, and I'd take any donations. And thank you, Steve, for your donation. If I don't get my goal of $1,000, then I guess I don't rappel and give the money back.
Well, you just don't get a rope, I think.
Anyway, appreciate any support you can give to the Council of Drug-Free Youth.
How much... how much would it take for you to just jump? I'll write a check right now.
Allow you to push me.
All right. So you are taking donations. And Councilman Hussey?
Madam Mayor, I would announce that this Friday, October 25th, I'll be cooking spaghetti for the 14th straight year for my Rotary Club spaghetti dinner. It's our annual fundraiser, which allows us to support local and international service projects at Grace Episcopal Church, 4:30 to 7:00. Carryouts are available. I've got some tickets. Frank Rysick's in the back of the room. Buy tickets off of Frank if you want some as well. But it's good spaghetti, so I'll be cooking all Friday afternoon. Encourage you to come out and support. Thank you.
Well, I hear it's famous spaghetti all these years, what, 13 years in a row? So I'll buy a ticket, and I'm sure that the rest of the council would agree to do the same. So thank you, Councilman Hussey. And I'd like to call on Lieutenant Heisland that has a... oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Fitzwater.
My council members were quick at the draw. I was just going to mention that on the issue that Sonny reported on, KWS had a nice discussion of the need for folks to participate in the planning process this morning, and I appreciate their support in encouraging people to come out and attend. And I think we need to continue to get that word out in the community, and they had a very nice discussion.
Good. We appreciate getting the word out. Thank you. And Lieutenant Heisland's going to tell us about road closures on the bridge tomorrow.
There's a possibility of intermittent road closures on the westbound or southbound lane of the bridge, so they can replace some navigational lights on the bridge. So there, between 9:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon, there may be some intermittent road closures there, lane closures on the bridge.
Thank you. We appreciate you making that MODOT announcement for us, so that we can all be aware of traffic and be safe in that area. And then also, I'd like to ask, with Halloween coming up, I wanted to ask our Chief Schofield and Lieutenant Heisland, that I believe the police and fire both have some events that are coming up for Halloween.
That's right. We have our Halloween pit stop at the Fire Museum again this year. It was very popular last year. That'll run from 5:00 to 7:00 on October 31st there at 911 East Miller at the Fire Museum. There's a sign there now, which is kind of cool. You can see that from Highway 50. We'll have that lit up very well. And that would be our advice to kids and parents that are out, is make sure that your kids have lighting on them or reflective clothing, so that they're highly visible. And just take care and make sure that they're supervised while they're out there at night.
And the police department is hosting their trunk-or-treat on October 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Be in the classroom at 401 Monroe. There's a costume contest at 7:30. They have a carnival and different things going on the whole night. Haunted hallway, I think, is what they have at their haunted precinct. But that's from 6:00 to 8:00 on October 30th.
Great. So on both of those events, are we too old to attend? We're good?
No, we'd love to have you come.
Okay.
To our event, and we'll... it'll have some games there to play, and it'll be fun for everybody.
Okay. We'll have to do that. Thank you. And I have the item B, the Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Moment, is to remember to follow the bicentennial on Instagram, @Missouri2021. And then I have some announcements to make. We had the Project Homeless Connect was held, and that was a big success. It was a perfect day for that. So I know there were some council members that participated and city staff, and we appreciate that effort. And speaking of, if we're old enough to go trick-or-treat, it was Councilwoman Laura Ward's birthday, and I have to recognize, because she did say that she is now old enough to be considered... if she was up for demolition, she would have to come before the Historic Preservation Commission now. So that was your words, and I thought, well, that is true. But you look way, way younger than that, but we'll be favorable if we ever have to consider you. So... And then my last announcement is, over the weekend, we had the firefighter... the state Fire Marshal Memorial Stair Climb for 9/11, and the goal of that is to climb 110 floors to replicate the amount of floors that it took to get to the top of the World Trade Center. And it's a fundraiser for families that have been affected, fallen firefighters and that sort of thing, that families in need. And it was very moving. There were firefighters from all over the state that were here that day. Chief Schofield did the stair climb, along with several members of our fire department, and chief, and the others were wearing their full gear and air packs. And it was very impressive, and I know you all finished in very quick time as well. So that was impressive. It is much harder to climb the steps than to rappel off of it, Councilman Mahalovich, so you can be thankful. I went to the top three times and walked back down, and it was... it's amazing how hard that is, just with no air pack and full gear on. But to do what you all did and so many firefighters, that was really impressive, and appreciate you all. You had several members there, chief. Six members, which was really great. So I enjoyed that. I didn't stay till the end. After I did three trips to the top, they informed me it was time to get to the Lincoln Parade, so that I would not be late, and I was really, really glad to hear that news that the parade was starting and I needed to move on, because after three climbs, I didn't know if I could do anymore. But truly, what's so neat about is, just when you think you can't do anymore, everybody is encouraging you and saying, yes, you can do it. And everybody wears lanyards of pictures of the firefighters who died in 9/11. And so around your neck, you're literally wearing a picture and a name, and you're walking for them, and it really makes you think of what they do every day for us, all of those in that public safety service. So we appreciate that more than you know. Any other announcements? Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representatives.
She was sick tonight.
Oh, Carolyn is sick. Well, I know she was going to give a recap of Homecoming. It was a great time. I know Lincoln won their football game. That was very exciting, and there were a lot of events held. I attended a bench dedication. And Carlos, do you have anything to add to Homecoming?
At the Old School concert, Madam Mayor was on the stage dancing, so that was...
Well, I wasn't going to announce that, but...
I was going to announce it. It was certainly a nice... but thank you for coming out. Thank you for your support, so as always.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman Graham. It was actually a lot of fun, and it was... there were alums from all around the country that had come back for the Old School and really, really had a good time. So... Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills. We have no one signed up this evening. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced 201961.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the county of Cole for reimbursement of costs associated with the geographic information systems.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an agreement between the county and the city. We currently have an agreement with them for shared costs of our GIS system. This is an agreement for the cost of two new servers, so they'll pay for one, and the city will pay for one.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. 201962.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule V, Accessible Parking Spaces of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of portions of Broadway Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This request was from St. Peter's Church. They requested two additional handicap spaces outside the church, and they agreed to build the accessible ramp near those. So once that work has been completed, and this would sign those as handicap accessible.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Number 201963.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing the right-of-way which remains in the 700 block of Marshall Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Basically, this is a property cleanup issue there, new community park, where the Parks Department is undertaking construction of their new park, or rehabbing of the existing park, I guess I should say. But basically, a cleanup property. It vacates the right-of-way, which would then become... parks will have both sides of it and become their driveway.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Item 13, Bills Pending 201955.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by adding a stop sign to Bush Street before entering Virginia Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would just add a stop sign on Bush Street. It's somewhat of an alley-like design, and it would stop... it'd be officially stopped before entering Virginia Street. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 201956.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Everson Company Certified Public Accountants LLC for audit services.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we went out with an RFP to bid out our audit services, and we sent it out to 15 firms. Four firms replied, and Everson Company, based on the number of hours proposed, was the lowest average hourly cost, and they proposed the highest number of hours for their management staff for the services. So we're recommending Everson Company.
Any questions? Councilman Graham?
How often do we bid those services out?
Well, this contract is for a year with two additional years. So basically, every three years, we go up for contract.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. 201957.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the J.C. Veterans Plaza Trust Fund.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would be a supplemental appropriation. It's for $6,500, and it would go to pay for Architects Alliance to do a design for the Veterans Plaza, which is the plaza located in front of the police station, and they'd be redesigning some of the viewing platforms for the bricks. It's a self-funded item where basically the sale of the bricks goes back into a fund to help maintain the plaza perpetually. I think the balance now is just over $131,000.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Bill passes. 201958, we will take up next week, or the next meeting. 201959.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $145,844 agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2019 to October 31, 2020, reflecting consolidated planning grant funds as approved in the FY2020 Unified Planning Work Program.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a planning grant from MODOT to Jefferson City. Jefferson City administers the Capital Area Metropolitan Transportation Organization. It's quite a mouthful. As Michelle Watkins mentioned, thanking the city and for helping out with regional planning, this is the group that does that transportation planning. It's an annual agreement. The fiscal impact is roughly $27,000 to the city and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, the informal calendar, Bill 201946. Councilwoman Wiseman.
After some discussion, I think we'll just leave it on the informal calendar.
Okay, thank you. And I think it is a topic that we will bring up again in the future. It is an important topic to discuss and we want to do it right. And as we close out this disaster and we've learned some information throughout the process that we would like to revisit that and it impacts the future. So, I think it's something we can take what we've learned from this current disaster and apply it to the future. So, we will have, we'll bring that back up since it's going to expire at this meeting. We'll bring it back up again in the future. Item 15, we have no resolutions. 16, no presentations. Item 17, are there any council and staff discussions this evening? Any new business? Any unfinished business? All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you. Have a great evening.